Gravacina en progreso.
Yeah, thank you everyone, welcome. This is February 1st of 2023. Thank you for joining us on our Joint City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority and successor housing agency regular meeting of Wednesday, February 1st of 2003. Again, thank you all that's everyone that's joining us tonight here in the chambers. Also those that are joining us on Zoom, those that are joining us on Facebook Live. Just a couple of reminders, the public does have several options to be able to join and participate in tonight's meeting. One is you can join the meeting via Zoom. The meeting ID is located on the agenda for this meeting. It's 899-2849-0335. You can also join us via telephone at 1669-900-6833. And this meeting is also being streamed live via Facebook, but just a note, if you want to make any comments and you want them to be reflected in the record, you please log on through the Zoom link as comments made on Facebook will not be part of the record for this meeting. And I believe we also have a translator tonight. Perfect. So with that, can we please get roll call?
Councilmember Cabrera. It's number Chavez here. Councilmember Corlejo.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Jimenez here. Mayor Velazquez.
Here.
All present.
Perfect. So we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is public comments on closed session items. So at this time, any member of the public may address the council agency on closed session items appearing on the agenda. Speakers will have a minute time limit of three minutes. Please be brief into the point. And if you can, if you're here in the chamber, if you can come up to the podium. If you're joining us via Zoom, if you can please raise your hand, use the raise hand feature and then we can announce you and unmute you as well. And so for today, you have one, do we have any comments on the important item? Okay, seeing we have no, no comments on Zoom nor here, then we'll move on to closed session items. So today we will be meeting to discuss the city council will recess to close session to consider personnel matters pursuant to government code section 54957b1. City manager recruitment. So we will adjourn to closed session. We'll be back at 6:30. We'll, we'll begin the public portion of our, of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us as we reconvene from our closed session. And at this point, I will turn it over to our city, Intrincity manager for the closed session report.
Mayor members of the council, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. And at this time, it is our pledge of allegiance. So if we can please stand for the pledge and if I can ask. Thank you. So we'll move on to our next item, which is additions and modifications to the agenda. And I believe at this time, we don't have any additions or modifications, correct?
Mayor members of the council, I should say that with respect to this agenda, you know, as I've told you, that this is the first one that I prepared and some things should have been on the agenda and weren't. The city attorney has advised us that among them include the reports from city council members and council members' suggestions for future agenda items. And he believes that you could discuss those. And so I don't know if we formally need to amend the agenda, but perhaps at the end of the meeting, if council members have reports or future agenda items, you could raise those. And I can assure you, we'll get it right the next time.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll just add it after the city managers' oral report. Reports, if there's any, and if anyone's prepared for that, and then also future agenda items. Okay, good. You don't need to vote on it. We're good. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, then we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is public comments. So at this time, any member of the public may address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda and are the interest of the public and are within the jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers will have three minutes. For those that are joining us in the paper, if you want to make comments, if we can have you step up to the podium, articulate your name and your address, and then we will have three minutes. And if you're joining us via Zoom, if you can raise your hand so that way we can recognize you and unmute you. So at this time, I will open it up for those that are joining us here in the chambers. If there's any public comments from the members of our city.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone. I'm here in the home and giving these those who are watching in on Zoom and live. My name is Eva Lain Reynolds. I live here in Saladin at 289 Fourth Street. And I just wanted to share for this month, the month is Black History Month. And I'm going to share this post that was posted from City of Saladin, Black History Month. The story of Black History Month begins in nineteen fifteen, half a century after the Fourteenth Amendment abolished slavery in the United States. That September, the Harvard trade historian Carter G. Woodson and the prominent ministry Jesse E. Morland founded this association for this study of Negro life and history, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other peoples in African descent. You guys, let's go ahead and celebrate Black History Month and honor those who served and also those who we know as well. It's just something that we want to acknowledge and not just month, but not just this month, but every, every, every day. And just to acknowledge those who served and also who helped make a difference, not just in citywide, but in state and everywhere else. And I wanted to share that. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eva, for those comments. And typically, we do have a resolution for Black History Month. So we'll make sure that we have that before the end of the month, make sure that we as a council recognize that as well. Okay, at this moment, any other comments from those joining us here? Okay, so I'll take it out to Zoom. Anyone who's joining us via Zoom have any comments? Okay, so I see that, oh. So I do see Lupita Murillo. If you can unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Lupita Murillo, and I wanted to ask if there was any update on whether information was researched to know the, what are the legal steps a city or a county must take if there is no HOA on an area that is in a city?
Thank you for those comments, Lupita. So staff is taking those notes down to be able to provide an update on that.
Member of this council, I'm not familiar with the issue. We can get into it. If Ms. Maria could let us know how we're in touch with her, that would be great to tell our staff here.
Yes, and I think we have our contact information. Darian has her contact information. And there is, there was a lot of background on this item, so we'll make sure you get that information.
Is this the subdivision that is entirely private streets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhat.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Murillo. Any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Also, before we move on to our consent calendar and then to our new business items, I do want to pause for a minute. And I do want to make sure that we have a moment of silence at this part of the agenda. So there's been, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of tragedies that we've experienced as a country. And so I think it's important for us to be able to reflect and recognize. So if we can take a moment of silence for the eleven people that were killed during the Lunar Year Festival on January twenty first at Monterey Park, California, the seven farmworkers that were killed at Half Moon Bay Mushroom Farm on January twenty third. Our thoughts and our prayers are with their families of all the victims. And I also want to extend our condolences to the parents of Tyree Nichols, who was being killed by Memphis police officers. As we know, these injustices and abuse of power and lack of discipline are for human life. By those who took a note to serve and protect is not acceptable anywhere. So we stand in solidarity with the community of Memphis and Tyree's parents to ensure this culture of violence is never tolerated. And I also want to take this time to mourn the loss of Officer Gonzalez Carrasco Jr. from the Selma Police Department, who was shot in the line of duty yesterday. Our condolences to the families of Officer Carrasco and to the entire community of Selma and to the entire public safety officers. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda. And at this time, it's our consent calendar. So we want to make sure if there is any members of the council that wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for future discussion or comment. And I do have one item. Oh, I actually don't have any guidance. So is there any members of the council that want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, any members of the public that wish to pull an item from the consent calendar of those joining us here and those joining us via Zoom? Okay, seeing none, council, then I will entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items, C one to C three today.
Second. Yes.
Do you want to see five? Yes, so let me go back. I apologize. I do have, I do have one item I have a question on. We go back just on C four. So just a quick question on item C four. And that is the resolution of the city council of the city of Saladin approving the purchase of one Public Works fleet vehicle from Saladin Auto Sales. So I just have a question on, on that because I know before we had prepared that the council had requested for a vehicle replacement program. So I know we had just purchased three vehicles from Saladin Auto Sales. So in our replacement program now with this other vehicle that we're purchasing, so which are the three vehicles that are being taken out for the replacement of these three vehicles? So I guess my question is, will we see a resolution disposing of the four other public works vehicles that we have in our fleet?
So we took the resolution for surplusing those vehicles to council during COVID. But then we couldn't buy new vehicles, so that resolution still stands now that we bought these four vehicles. We can finally dispose of the ones we took to council a couple of years ago.
Okay, so those other ones that came before us, you're going to dispose of the four vehicles now?
This, this spring, we should have an auction to get rid of those, plus a bunch of police cars and other old equipment.
And Don, just my other question, because I know I thought we didn't have that replacement program. So is there a tracking system for those that are already, you know, at the end of their useful life? And then that we're continuing that process at some point, we had requested that information.
Right, we do. And we update that just before the budget. And that's what enables us to request in the budget how many replacement vehicles are going to come in here. But we can share that replacement program. It's basically a spreadsheet.
Okay. Yeah, if you can show that, thank you. Thank you. That was my question. Okay, council. So there is a motion on the floor. So all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. And at this time, it is our business item, B dash one, filing of a, filling of a planning commission vacancy. And I will turn this over to Ariana.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. At this time, it is recommended that the city council and city chancellor review the candidates for planning commission and consider approval of mayor's appointment, if any. At this time, the current members of the planning commission are Vice Chair Perga Diaz, Chair Javier Nieto, Commissioner Roberto Cruz, and Commissioner Sami Fuerte. And as you know, there is a vacancy for the fifth member in the commission. We presented this item before. And on January eighteenth, we presented three applicants, Flavio Diaz Torres, Evalista Bañuelos, and Steven Morales. There was no appointment made back in that meeting. And they are directed staff to move this item to this agenda and have council members to enter the recommendations for any equipment on their end. Right now, or during this time of the staff report, applications for the vacant position were received. And there were still interested applicants, Flavio Diaz Torres, Evalista Bañuelos, and Steven Morales withdrew his application for the position. However, we did receive a new application on January thirty first by Josefina Aguilera. And I believe that was forwarded over to you all for review. And we did encourage again applicants, in case council have further questions, or if Josefina Aguilera would like to present herself or a council would like to ask the same questions from the previous meeting, we did encourage them to attend here in person. At this time, it is the best interest of the city council mayor to review that application and appoint a new commissioner. Again, it is important to know that the commissioner conference by the League of Cities is in March. And we do, staff would like to recommend this new appointee, appointees to the planning commission to attend to this important meeting that will allow them to get more information and review of what planning commissioner does in just municipalities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ariana, for that. So I think I want to begin just with a couple of comments before we go into just some of the questions and with the presentation with the opening it up to be able to, to ask the questions. So I just want to, you know, begin by saying thank you to all the applicants that submitted their interest. And, you know, even, even to Steven, I know he withdrew, but thank you for, for his interest as well. So I just, you know, thank you for your patience as we maneuver through this third agenda, I have thirty months, right? To have this on the, on the agenda. And I especially want to thank Mr. Flavio Diaz Torres for his patience as well as we maneuver through the process. And I just want to, just to be clear that the process that, the appointment process that we currently have does not have a comprehensive and detailed applicant selection criteria other than that's what's listed on the municipal code, which is under section two point twelve zero two one under the planning commission eligibility. So it's, you know, just want to make sure that I articulate this for our residents. It's the, the conditions are only to be a resident of the city, except for one of the members that's at large, be a minimum of eighteen years of age, and be a registered voter. Those are the criteria that we currently have. So I also want to thank the Economic Development Department for your outreach and patience too. As you mentioned, I know it's important to fill this position and it's been lengthy. So thank you for that. And also before presenting the recommendations and in the spirit of fair and transparency as part of this democratic process, I want to be able to provide the new applicant, which is now Mrs. Josie Aguilera, an opportunity for her to be able Um, and an opportunity for her to be able to answer the four questions that were derived from the council. Uh, during the prior, um, meeting of January eighteen. Um, and so, uh, I know Mr. Flavio Diaz Torres and Mrs. Elvista Bañuelos, um, answered those questions during that time. Um, so I, again, I will note that the four questions were not pre-planned or approved in advance by the City Council. Uh, they originated by various council members during the meeting on the eighteen. And we use those as our unofficial questions for the candidate. So I just want to make sure that process is clear to our, to our resident, to our applicants. And also to our community. Um, so once all the questions are asked, I will open it up for council members to be able to make any comments. So make sure I articulate that, um, and then we will take it out to the public for any comments. And then we'll bring it back to the dais for any council discussion, and then, um, I will be presenting my recommendation at that time. So council, are we in agreement with that process? Okay, and the four questions that we had in the past, um, that we had for the January eighteenth, I just want to reiterate them. Is, you know, we asked the candidates to introduce themselves and to share their qualifications. And we also asked to share why they were interested in this appointment, and would they be able to fill the four-year commitment that's required? Um, and what differentiates them from other applicants? And how will they handle or confront opposition in the planning commission? Those were the four questions that were asked a lot.
And Mayor, the chair, that, uh, full transparency, it's kind of easier to do the interview when you know the questions and they've been asked prior to, uh, in a previous meeting. So just to keep a, a playing field level for everybody, and I know the individual that we're going to have speak today will do very well. And as a result, uh, we all know that, you know, once you know the questions, it's kind of easier to answer.
Yeah, so it's coming that you went and you asked that you looked at the questions on the January eighteenth meeting. Is that what you're?
Oh, no, I'm sure she participated.
No. No, she didn't.
Oh, okay.
No. Yeah, so she's really coming. So that's why I wanted to make sure that the questions that we asked were the same questions that we asked the other candidates during that time. So, yeah, so if we can come up, and then so the first one is, um, just an introduction and share your qualifications.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Josefina Aguilera, I'm a lifelong resident in Salad. I have my qualifications, so I have a master's in business administration. I was a solid unit vice president, district board president, trustee for five years. Prior to that, um, I was also helping out at the Catholic Church here across the street as a minister. Uh, as well as a catechism teacher, I volunteered many at the school. I've been very involved with the community the last few years I haven't been, uh, for personal reasons. So anyhow, um, uh, my experience, I do own, uh, real estate property here in town. So I have a very invested interest in the vision and the growth of Salad. I did raise two beautiful kids. They're adults now. They've launched Mary, um, Finnish college and what have you. And I thank this community, the people, the residents and family, um, for providing that forum for me to be able to raise a great family. Um, with that said, I'm interested in participating in the planning commission, um, and serving my community using the skills that I have. Um, in finance, I was in finance for seventeen and a half years and been assistant vice president for the second largest bank. Uh, in the world, HSBC, now Capital One. Um, now I work at a CTF as a health program specialist. Um, and as I mentioned, I was also in the school board, so I have a diverse background. Um, a lot of my family is from here from Salad. This is my community. This is my friend. So I have a very big interest in collaborating in the planning commission, um, across the state nationwide. And bring innovative solutions to the problems that we face right now. The demographics, um, keep changing. Uh, a lot of my family, uh, who have been a fair long time here, do own homes, property, what have you. But I also have family that doesn't have, can't afford it. Uh, one of the biggest challenges I'm seeing right now is, uh, with the kids coming out of college, getting the jobs. I still can't afford, uh, property here in Salad. Um, that's, you know, one of my biggest concerns. I know when I bought a college back, I mean, when I bought a house back in ninety six. I was in college, got married and bought a house, and I could afford it. I could barely afford it. And I can't say the same thing right now for the kids coming out of college. That's one of the biggest issues. Uh, we do need affordable, affordable housing. We still have ad workers who can't afford housing either because of the pay. Um, it hasn't kept up with the housing market, um, or what have you. Um, so like I said, I know a lot of people from different backgrounds interested in housing. I'm here to help out and come up with innovative solutions. I did participate in, um, the bond for the teacher housing, and I know that's something that's been discussed and has, you know, uh, what has been discussed. Between the council and, um, the school board. Um, I worked with the attorney on that innovative project, bringing it to Salad and also the bond, um, to support it as well. I'm interested in having that implemented soon, um, but that's a different conversation. And again, like I said, I'm here to collaborate to come up with good solutions. I'm not here to fight, I'm here to work, doing, and, uh, like I said, do my homework. Rita, what can we do? Solve the problems and, um, keep moving forward, you know, a lot of forward thinking. I look forward to working with all of you, uh, sharing my, uh, solutions as well as the planning commissions as well. And adding value as much as I can, as I have been in the past with my church, my community, my family, that was all that school district board. Um, and I'm, you know, eager to take on a new challenge, you know, learn something new and something different. Again, I have a diverse background, and I believe I can add a lot of value, and thank you for the opportunity for, uh, sharing my background and experience.
Thank you. So the second question is, please share why you are interested in this appointment? So I think you've shared some of that already, um, and will you be able to fill the four-year commitment? This is the four-year commitment if appointed, so. Just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, if there was any, um, impediments.
Yes, I, I can, uh, fulfill the four-year commitment, I can live long, whereas in Salad, my parents are still here, so. And the family is here, so I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. And like I said, I like to share my knowledge and experience, um, and come up with innovative solutions for our community. As we grow and also learn along the way.
Thank you. So, um, the next question is, what differentiates you from other applicants?
I don't know their backgrounds for sure, so I don't know what would differentiate me, but like I mentioned before, I'm invested. I'm a resident, um, um, forward thinker, uh, always looking for solutions, reaching out to people statewide. Nationally looking at what other people are doing to solve their problems in their local, uh, communities, which are similar to ours. Uh, as I mentioned before, one of the things, one of the, uh, innovative projects was the teacher housing never done in this area. Was done in Marin County, uh, the attorney from San Francisco, um, approached me, and we had conversations about it. And I thought, hey, you know what? What a great opportunity this is for us to bring in, uh, individuals who can't afford to live in Salad. Or starting off their career, uh, living in a low-income, uh, housing property, supporting our community. You know, we want to keep people here, and that was one of our biggest challenges, is that our professional people were just coming to work here, couldn't afford to live here. Um, and so even with that, the challenge was, how do we get them not just to work, but to stay in the community? And also invest themselves in our, our children, um, and our community as well. So, um, again, it's being able to have different relationships and connections, and then looking at things to, you know, solving the problems from a different perspective. And, and really listening, you know, because sometimes we think we know what the solution is, and now, that was one of the early things I learned on working, uh, in the finance industry. Technology was always changing, um, the financial markets were changing continuously, so we had to keep up. But when I thought, okay, this is what I have in mind, at the end of a project, what I had in mind was totally different from what I wanted. Versus what we all wanted as a group. So I never stuck with, this is what I want. It's, this is what I was starting with. And it ended up with something different, which is what, you know, it was a collaborative effort to produce a result, and it wasn't just mine. So that was one of the things that I learned along the way is that, yeah, I can need the pack, I can need a project. I can say this is my vision, but at the end of the day, I'm going to be open to it, and it ends up being a better result because of that.
Thank you. So this is the last question. How will you handle or confront opposition in the planning commission?
Opening, keeping an open mind, as I mentioned before, you know, if I have a vision, I'll share it. That doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be my way of the highway. It is a, you know, it's a collaborative effort that as a team, we work together to come up with a solution. And, you know, having patience with people in front of understanding and asking questions. So it's not just letting them speak, it's helping them see, see their vision through. And then how does it work out? You know, how does it fit in with what I'm working on, what we're all working on, and what we all want? At the end of the day, we have, we have valuable input. Um, and, you know, as I mentioned before, is what I think is going to happen is, you know, totally different than what actually is a result, and it's a, a result of collaboration. And yeah, you know, I, I'm not afraid of conflict. It is inevitable. We actually have to have it. Because some people are strong about it. They feel strongly about a certain color, a certain, uh, idea, and, you know, that's okay. We'll make it work. And it's, and that's what it is. It's about making it work for everyone so that we can, you know, implement a good solution overall.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, that concludes the question, the four questions that we have for the candidate. So thank you so much for, for that. So I will now, at this point then, let me go back to, um, I will open it up to the council. For any comments at this time.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mayor. Um, I, I would like to say, all the individuals that applied, Flavio, Eva, Josie, coming forward. And I'm willing to serve your community. And again, um, it's one where, you know, one person is going to get that seat. And ultimately, it's mayor's choice, and it's just supported by us whether, uh, whether we believe in the selection or not. But I do appreciate it, and I know it's not easy getting in front of being this, and so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, you can. Yeah, I know, thank you. We'll go into now. And so council members, any other comments before I take it out to the public?
Yeah, I know, for me, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Jimenez. I think it's great that we have folks that are interested in doing something like this. You know, for me, I. It just feels like we, you know, we've done this already three times, and so for me, I kind of feel like maybe it'd be good to bring it back to our strategic meeting. And kind of have a discussion about this, so that we're all on the same page of how we're going to move forward with the, the process, rather than continually to bring it forth. You know, every two weeks, uh, that's just what it seems like to me, but maybe, um, maybe I'm off base and, um, you know, who've got two of the same folks. That are, have applied already. Uh, we've got, uh, a new person, and so, uh, rather than for me, than going through this process. And, and ending up in a place where maybe it doesn't work out for anybody. It, it just seems that that might be the best solution to, to take it forward and, and try to deal with it that way. But that's just my, my comments right now.
Okay, thank you for those comments.
Just want to thank everybody who was applying, Eva, Flavio, and Josefina. Thank you so much for showing, uh, that commitment and the effort to do this first. And it doesn't matter how many times it takes, we have to find that the right person for, for that right job. Remember that that is a very important committee, uh, is going to decide how the land is going to be distributed. So I think that we have to take time to be able to find the right person for that, for that position. And thank you for your, for applying, of course.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I guess I just wanted to, um, echo some words, you know, thank you, uh, Josie and Flavio and Eva. There she is, um, you know, for coming out here. I really appreciate, um, everybody's time and, you know, the same thing. It is, you know, an important time for us. The city's growing, and we want to make sure to be growing, uh, you know, the, the correct way. And, um, I was going to say, if our economic development department is not in a, in a rush to make a quick appointment. Which I'm sure you want to make the correct, you know, choice, what's best for our community. And then, you know, maybe we should, uh, you know, discuss it a little bit more to make sure we, you know, we're all on the same page.
Thank, thank you for those comments. Um, so I'll make my comments, and then I'll take it out to the public. So I disagree with some of the comments, and, and I guess it's okay because we can agree to disagree. But I think, uh, for me, it's, you know, I've been part of this council with prior mayor appointments, and, you know, the prior mayor made appointments to this. To this, uh, planning commission, and, and there was a disagreement. Um, you know, there wasn't disagreement because our municipal code is pretty clear in terms of what the eligibility and criteria is. Absent of that, and that's why I wanted to really articulate that to our community of what we have before us, the process that we have before us. So moving, you know, along or delaying it to go back and look at, you know, what is a criteria? I think the criteria has been before us as a part of the municipal code. It hasn't been changed. Um, and if we want to change it, I think, you know, we can go back and look at it, because I believe that we do need more of the selection criteria. But the process that we have before us now is a process that is existing within the municipal code. And within the purview of the municipal code that allows the mayor to be able to make the appointment with the consensus of, of the, um. Of the council. Um, so for me, it's, I, I don't want to delay the process. I think it's already going for, you know, Flavio that has been here since December. It's not fair. For Eva that has been here for the last two months, it's not fair. For applicants that keep coming forward, like, you know, Josie today, it's not fair. So I think, you know, if it's a, I, I'm not sure exactly what the council is looking for in terms of the selection process. But I think the selection process that we have before us is, is pretty clear. Um, it's pretty clear in terms of what we have. Um, and, uh, it's, it's not about amending it. If we want to amend it, I think that would fall within the next election of the planning commission, but not within this one. So, um, those are my comments. I will come back with my recommendation, but I want to take it out to the public for any comments from the public at this time. And we'll, uh, start with those that are joining us here, um, in our chambers. Any public comments?
Good evening, everyone. And I just wanted to say, Ariana, thank you so much for your patience. I understand your frustration, and I understand how you're feeling. Um, I just wanted just to hiccup what Mayor was saying, and I just wanted to share the criteria. Criteria about being the planning commissioner. We have the qualifications. We have the background. We have the heart. And I'm not sure, why are we tabling that for another time? So I just wanted to share my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, interim City Manager. My name is Yvani Baramora. Lifelong resident of Salad, five thirty eight for circle, uh, board president. Uh, but most importantly, um, committed citizen that, one of the beauties of. Soledad, especially as a young person growing up here, is that we always had adults supporting young people to take opportunities. And we have an immense individual in Flavio, who committed right from the beginning, right? Took that leap because the door was open to him, because he's been committed to learning about city government. I know Flavio now for a while, and before it used to be that he was really interested in business and learning that aspect. When you talk to him now, he's very keen on talking about city government and what that can mean for him and his future. And when I think about the planning commissioner role, it's not just about the advisement capacity that that has. But it also within that, that opportunity has in that individual. And I think planning commissioner is a right next step for Flavio in the sense of learning more intricacies around city government. But also continue to live out his passion. And, and I think there's, the record shows in terms of now knowing him through Rotary and having him really collaboratively establish Rotary. Which is the first, uh, Rotary, Rotary Club that's endorsed in terms of for college students throughout the Salinas Valley. And really centralized it here in Salad. So not only is it opening what that means to him. But it also means that he's going to be bringing others to be more involved in the city. And I think that's a huge opportunity that without, in my personal belief. The placement and endorsement of his candidacy into the planning commissioner is a huge miss that we will miss as a city. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else?
Hi. Just one thing I do want to reiterate, and something that you mentioned earlier, was, you know, all about fairness, about this whole process. And so the biggest thing I want to point out is, you know, yeah, I've been here since the first one that we won about this, the third time now. But way before that, I've been around for Bear Mountain, which you remember quite well. I've been around to talk to staff. I've been around. I've been around to talk to staff. I've been around to go over the housing element, the municipal code, every single aspect of the, whatever item comes to the planning commission. And so, um, of course, I've been working on the planning commission for a while now. But I've been at this for a lot longer than it's been available. And so I just wanna make that very clear when it comes to. You know, saying who wants it. And so if there's any disregard for whatever it may be about. My influences or what, how I may come about being a commissioner. You know, all of you have my information and I would love to go over it. And so, you know, thank you for having me the third time now. And so, appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we will take it out to Zoom. I do see we do have a hand up on Zoom. So now, I will. Uh, open it up to Fernando and Saldo Sanchez. If you can unmute yourself. And then next is Benito and then Lupita.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, so I just wanted to. Uh, give my comments. Uh, first, I wanna address, I guess, some concerns that the public has. About having, you know, youth representation, especially by. An individual that just spoke, not Flavio Ivan. You know, myself, I did, uh, apply to be part of the council as someone that's younger. And I believe Ivan endorsed somebody else that wasn't myself or the other young person. So it's like interesting that. You know, we kind of are picking and choosing who is old enough, who is young enough for these positions. Uh, but number two, for the planning commissioner position, I think that it's a very important position, especially as we are looking to expand Solidad. So I think it would be good to have somebody that has a little bit more experience, um. With sort of these topics, uh, somebody that. Has experience, you know, reading through. Large policies and making sure that they kind of know what's, what's going on, not saying that. You have to be a certain age or something like that. Either to do that, I'm sure that any of the three people can do it. But it is something that I think is very important. Uh, somebody that will be able to recognize. What the needs are right now for the community and what the needs will be in the future for the community, community. And I believe that, um. One individual, uh, Josefina Perez Aguilera would be great for this position. So I would, I guess, as a community member, endorse her. Uh, but yeah, that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. So we'll move on to Benito, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, thank you so much for this panel. Thank you for Flavio and the, and the other, um, presenters. Thank you for being, you know, um, willing to, to do the work for our, our town. Um, I, I, I also wanna say that, um, I think Josefina really spoke to, to me. Um, I'm one of those sons that have graduated university but can't go back to Solidad because. My house is already filled with too many, too many sons that have moved back. So I, 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 her point really spoke out to me. Um, her experience seems really, really to outweigh any type of the benefits that youth, um, could, could. Could provide for this space. I am all for youth involvement. I just think that we need to be really mindful of where we, where we choose to involve youth. Especially in spaces where experience is more required. Um, we know youth could be really malleable. They, they could, um. Often be influenced by other adults. So I, I really think that Josefina, um, or anybody. Who has a more experience, um, will take on this position more robustly and more with the care of, of the town. It seems like she has businesses there. She has family members. So she seems to have a balanced, um, stake in this. Um, I do, you know, commend Flavio for being here and I wish him the best in his future career. And. I know there's other spaces. There's probably volunteer work that he could do with a planning commission. But I would really, um, pick experience over, over youth involvement here. I think it's pretty obvious. I think, um, council member Chavez's. Comments were concerning due to the last time that we were having this, this conversation. He wanted to move forward really fast. And now it seems like there's, there's position to hold it off a little bit. So I, I want, wanna move forward with this. It seems like the community, the, the, the. The applicants themselves wanna move forward with this. So I think if, if the council just does what's best and listens to the community. And works as the public servants that you all are, are supposed to be for us. Um, and I, I think that that would be the best approach in this for any job. I think it would be clear that. Um, that Josefina might be the, the, the most, um, experienced here. And I also wanna point out that I would really like to see. More female involvement in, in the Solidad politics. And this is one way that, that we could, um, increase that, that. That, um, involvement or having more, more women or more head is in our, in our local politics. Um, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate the work that you all do. Um, and yeah, hopefully y'all make the, the right choice.
Thank you, Benito. So I'll move it on to Lupita. Lupita A, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So my name is Lupita Royo. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Um, so I just wanna echo what has been already stated. So. Um, when Josefina Perez was answering the questions, I really resonated and I felt seen and heard. So I'm also one of the folks that, um, I was born in Salinas, raised in Solidad, and then I moved out to attend UC Santa Cruz and. Right now, I'm currently actually looking for, to purchase a home in Salinas. So it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for folks to stay and be, uh, maintain in, in Solidad and. Stay within the area. So, um, her, her speech really resonated with me and I felt seen and heard. And I think that's. One of the most important things about being a community member and also advocating for the community. Being able to relate to the challenges, being able to, uh, foresee solutions. So I really liked what she said and. Um, I also do appreciate the comment being made about having more women join the board and having more women, um, direct to those solutions. So. I do wanna endorse Josefina Perez on, for, to be selected for the position. Um, and congratulations to everyone else who is currently running because it is very hard and challenging to come out here. Um, so I just wanna say, uh, thank you to everyone who is involved in the process. So that's my comment. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Lupita. Okay, and I don't see any other comments. Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, um, for your comments. So. Um, the second portion of this is to bring it back after coming, public comments to, uh, council discussion and then recommendations. Um, from the council and from the, my recommendation as, as part of the selection criteria. So. Um, I will open it up if the council has any other comments. If not, I will move forward with my recommendation.
I mean, it's like, um. I just wanna say I really appreciated the comments, uh, that everyone gave during public comments. Thank you. And I, I do, you know, agree that it's important to have a woman representation and, and, uh, you know, a strong, intelligent woman. Um, at that. And I do feel that we're pretty fortunate because we do have Sandy Puerta who currently sits in our. Um, in our planning commission. And she is, if anyone have watched the meeting, she's very outspoken. She's. Uh, pretty much fearless. Um, honestly, it's kind of amazing to see her on there. And so I do feel that we have that representation and, you know, again, a lot of the, um. Projects that we're working on and that we have coming up are gonna be very long-term, um, projects. So they'll be maybe twenty. Twenty years long, if not longer. So, um, because of that aspect, I do think that it's important to have a diverse, um, committee. Just like it's always kind of the beauty, um, of having a diverse board or committee is that you have all these different. Um, people with different experiences, different, um, outlooks, uh, you know, different skills. And I think that's what makes a, a student forward. So that's. Uh, or a strong community. And that's what I'm, you know, what I would like for ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Okay, so any other comments? So I, I'm gonna move forward and I'm gonna make my comments. And I really wanna take some time to articulate what I'm gonna say. Um, and my recommendations and why I'm making this recommendation. So it's really clear to the candidates. And it's really clear to the community. And then, you know, if, if the council still chooses, um, not to support, then I really want to make sure that. Our community understands, um, and that each council member articulates, other than what we know that's been said about youth. Obviously, for me, I support youth. When we were here, you know, back in October. We have candidates that came before us, the city council, and I recommended two of the youth that were before us to be able to sit on the board. And I just wanna remind this council that that recommendation wasn't approved. So I think for me, we can't pick and choose when we want you to pers. Participate, um, and when, you know, what, what. What committees or what not committees, we, we want you to participate. I, I support you. And I think you need to be part of the decision-making table. But I also think there's in this specific. Um, recommendation, uh, for me, there's, there's a couple of really important key factors. And I wanna make sure that. Um, I, I articulate those. So again, just for our public. The municipal code states that the mayor shall appoint the member of the planning commission with the council approval. Um, and as my prior approval of Mrs. Evarista Benuelos, the last meeting that we were here was not approved on a three to two vote. Um, today I will be presenting a different, uh, another recommendation based on several key factors. Um, it's gonna be based on the applicant's education, history of employment, history of civic engagement. And articulation of the reasons for why they're wanting to be a planning commissioner. It's gonna be based on the interest of having the nominee participate in the upcoming planning commissioner conference, as was stated earlier. That's coming up on March twenty ninth to the thirty first in Guardian Grove. So delaying, um, that appointment, I think it's not a benefit. To whoever is going to be in that position. And in the interest of ensuring that we're promoting and supporting inclusion. And gender and racial diversity in all of our city boards and commissions, not just those that we pick and choose. And in the absence of a list of recommendations submitted for consideration by council member Chavez, Coralejo, and Mayor Pro Tem. Jimenez was requested during the last meeting of the eighteen. And in the absence of a more comprehensive and detailed and approved application selection criteria, as stated, that is not part. Of our, um, our current municipal code. So I do make a motion to appoint Mrs. Josefina Perez Aguilera to serve. As our next planning commissioner for a period of four years, based on the following. Based, I'm gonna articulate her education. So based on her resume, she is obtained, obviously, as she mentioned, a master's and a bachelor's in business administration. And other advanced certifications in school business management from the University of Southern California. A master's in governance and certification, California School Board Association. A chief business officer and director of finance certification from the California Association of School Business Officials. Mrs. Aguilera is highly qualified to execute the duties of a planning commissioner. As it relates to her abilities to make informed decisions on projects based on data analysis. Findings and consistency with the general plan. And zoning laws that we have, um, based on her history of employment. Uh, she's currently works at the California Department of Corrections as a health program specialist, as she mentioned. And held other positions as associate government program analyst. She's also held several high-profile positions in her extensive business career in H, HSBC. As her, as credit services and assistant vice president in Capital One as principal product manager. And she has also been a president and business owner of a farm labor contracting company. Mrs. Aguilera, again, is highly qualified to execute the duties of a planning commissioner. Given her extensive business background and project management experience. Without a doubt, this will help her analyze future growth and development focused on fundamental issues. Of location, housing needs, environmental protection, and economic development. On her history of civic engagement. Mrs. Aguilera grew up in Solidad. As you heard, she's a resident and has many ties to our city. She brings a wealth of civic engagement, most notably in the Solidad Unified School District. As president of Board of Trustees from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. Monterey County School Board Association Treasurer, twenty eighteen. Um, to twenty nineteen, National Association of Latino Elected Officials, a member of twenty sixteen. And California Latino School Board Association member, as well as, as she mentioned, she, uh, been. Active in our native saw to Catholic Church as a minister and a catechism teacher. And so her extensive civic engagement has prepared her to execute the goals of a planning commissioner. As she has extensive experience with policies, regulations, goals, outcomes. Reporting compliance, data analysis, decision-making skills, understanding of public service ethics. Public versus private interest, understanding of conflict of interest and ability to interpret. And understand highly complex laws based on her board member role and various certification. So for all of these reasons. I move to appointments is Josie Perez Aguilera to the planning commission. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Can we get a roll call?
So this is a motion, uh, to confirm the mayor's appointment of Josefina Aguilera to the planning commission. House Member Cabrera.
Yes.
House Member Chavez.
No.
House Member Corolejo.
No.
Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Jimenez.
Jimenez.
Oh, I didn't keep it right.
Jimenez.
Yeah.
And Mayor Valeska.
Yeah.
So the motion is adopted. It's free to.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, um, Mrs. Aguilera.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. I, again, I just wanna say thank you again. I know this wasn't an easy process and I really respect. All of your endurance to be able to be here. Um, and we will continue if this, if this board and this, uh, council is really committed. To supporting our youth. Then I think we start today and looking at how do we really make sure that. The next, the next, the, our youth are the ones that are sitting here in our, in, in the dais.
Point of order.
Oh. Yes, but I'm just saying my, I can say my remarks. Yeah. So I'm just saying my remarks in, in terms of thanking the, the, um, all of the applicants that were here. And, um, hopefully that we can really truly, uh, begin to support our youth in our community. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on then to our next item of our agenda, which is item B dash two. Um, parks and recreation master plan project update and request for council input and community engagement process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Don Wilcox, Public Works Director. Last, um, council meeting, I believe we did a virtual presentation, initial. Uh, introduction of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which council previously approved last fall. We really hit the ground running. Blue Point Planning, uh, staff is here to make a presentation. We spent the last two days, couple days, visiting every park. The landfill, the agobe. So tonight, they'd like to have some initial discussion with council, get some, uh, input as a, as a. Body. And then going forward, they'll interview you each individually at length. Uh, so we basically wanna catch up on what we've been doing so far, uh, talking about the outreach and community engagement. Uh, and where we're going from here. So we'd like to introduce Mindy, the principal from Blue Point Planning.
Welcome, Mindy. Thanks. It's nice to be here in the actual real person rather than on a video. So thank you very much for having me here tonight. Uh, I wanna just quickly point out my team who I have here, Emma Cooper, Gail Donaldson, and Lauren Adela Para. Um, we, they are working with me and the, the city to do a, a real evaluation. And, uh, deep dive into everything park recreation program with the community. And so far, it's been amazing. Um, so what I'd like to do is just kind of give you a quick highlights of what we've done over the last couple days because, um, we've had this. Unbelievable amount of information given to us. And there's some really great takeaways even so, so far. So. One is that we've seen that you have an amazing set of great parks and there's a lot of opportunities in them. Um, one of the big ones, which you guys echoed to me at the last meeting, is the idea of health and wellness and really enhancing those parks. Um, with amenities, with different kinds of programming, um, that we can also serve all community members, not just around sports. But in arts and in culture, thinking about history, um, thinking about how people enjoy the open space as a whole. Um, and really creating a very holistic and really grounded approach to the parks and the recreation services that we provide. Incredible opportunities. There's also, of course, challenges. Again, one of the things you've mentioned, we're seeing and hearing from everybody, the wind. Um, so we've already started thinking about the solution sets and how we think about the wind and what that looks like. Um, we see the trees that have been aging and falling partly because of the wind. But how do we think about protecting and creating and stewarding? Trees as part of our process. Um, and then also the challenge of serving all the demands. There's lots of demands you're growing, as you mentioned. So how do we address that? That's going to be something that's going to be, uh, a challenge as well. We're also exploring really new, interesting opportunities. We went after the landfill and one of the things that was kind of an interesting concept is. Things like integrating energy, like solar or wind, um, energy up on that site that might be able to play for some of the. Uh, park improvements that we can imagine down the road. Um, or the adobe and how we can think about that and transition to and actually use in part of the community and part of economic development. Um, and looking at grants. So we're doing all sorts of different, um, thinking. So you have in front of you a little highlights of what we're sharing with the community in terms of the process and down below. That's generally the, the direction we're in. We're in that very beginning piece, um, developing existing conditions and really understanding where we are today. Um, there's a survey and you'll see there's a link on that. Hope that you and everybody who's listening will take the survey. There is a, uh, website that we created just for this project, which is soladeparksandrecplan.com. Uh, you can get the survey there. You can get it on the, the website with the city as well. Um, so really want people to do that. That's great. As we mentioned, we'll be talking to each one of you. We're talking to a number of the communities. We had a great team meeting this afternoon. We had ten different teams. Talk about that. We're meeting with business, with, um, health, with public safety. Um, sports, uh, tomorrow in small groups. Uh, and then really come back, um, in a few months and go and have a more larger community engagement activity. So there's a lot going to be happening. Um, over the time. But what I wanted to do tonight, um, we're asking the question in all our small groups. And so I'm going to ask you here and hopefully you can share with the community at large. As some of the concerns that you have, things that we should be thinking about as we're evaluating and looking at the parks and the recreation and the programs. And also the other time, what are the opportunities that you want to make sure that we are thinking about? Things that just may not be apparent that are really important. And I have a little bit about some of the success and goals that you might be doing. But this is an opportunity to talk a little bit more and share a little deeper about your experience and your thinking, um, around the park. So that's really what this is about. No videos, no anything like that, just really hearing from each of you. So we can, um, understand that. And I, and now I could be writing it down. My great colleagues are taking notes, so I can just concentrate. So I turn it back to you for that question.
Yeah, thank you so, thank you so much. And thank you for providing also the, the flyer and the survey links to. Uh, yeah, thank you. So let me open it up to the council, um, and then we'll take it out to the public if you, if there's any comments also from our public. So I'll start with, I'll start on my, um, left with, uh, council member Caber.
Uh. No, I'm impressed, but, uh, I would like to hear more, um, later. Uh, I know that you are very, very, um, getting all the information together. And I think I, I'll wait until you guys have all the propositions and all the information that is needed, yeah. Uh, just one, I'm not going with that Spanish and we, can I make a?
Sure, sure. I, I, I was, uh, unfortunately, I don't speak Spanish, so I appreciate anything you give us in any of this. Let's make it clear. And, you know, obviously the subtleties and nuances, um, so that it's great. Please share that with staff and you can agree that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Chuck.
If you could repeat the question, that way I could, uh, understand how I could better answer it.
Yeah, so, you know, and this is, it's a fairly broad question, so there's no bounds to it. But are there any concerns that you're thinking about? Right? Again, we talked about some of the growth. Um, there's lots of things that I've heard from different community challenges with the parks and the recreation pieces. Um, so that's one side of it. Anything that you share on that, the things you want to tell me about. And then the other sides, are there opportunities that you want to make sure that we explore or think about as we're putting together our recommendations and our analysis?
You know, um, for me, I, I, I think we maintain our parks fairly well overall. Um, but the challenges as, as were mentioned and are in part of this package that you're putting forth. Um, it is a, it is a community that does have a lot of wind. Um, and so I know we do have outdoor courts, uh, that are tennis, that are, uh, you know, basketball. And both of those can be challenging at times, um, just because of. How they're situated and how the wind hits those, those particular courts. I think one of the things is, is looking at that in design. So I think part of the new park that's being constructed. Um, that was kind of something that was looked at. So when you talk about where the gazebo was going to go, where the, the picnic tables are going. Um, where the amphitheater is going, how it's going to be lower than some of the other areas. Um, I think those are all kind of being considered. When you look at the Hartnell campus, uh, that was built, uh, the community, uh, room, as well as the area. That could be utilized outside, uh, was done in a way that, you know, they kind of took into, uh, into, um. The concept of making certain that the way the wind usually comes, because it's never predictable a hundred percent. But the way it usually comes in, the way it was built, it was built as a U. Um, so that that area that could be utilized on the outside, uh, for the community, for events, uh, could be protected. On most occasions. And so I think those are some of the, the challenges that we have. I think also, um, some of the things that folks, uh, regularly bring up is that we don't have a park such as. Gonzalez or other communities such as Greenfield where it's a large, huge park in downtown. And that is something that we won't have just because we don't have that land. So that, that is a challenge that we're not going to make, maybe we won't be able to overcome. But I think that, um, there's opportunities with the Sessot Chavez Park and some of the ideas and concepts that are moving forward with it. Uh, what could we utilize to, uh, make some changes that better our parks? Um, and then also when you look at Lum Park, Peverini Park, how could we better utilize those parks? Right now they're currently being used for softball, football, and soccer for the most part. Um, and how could we better utilize those so that we don't destroy them so quickly? Those are used with, when you're talking about football, you're talking about softball and you're talking about, um, soccer. Uh, cleats are used, uh, they deteriorate really quickly because they're used year round. Is there different methods that we can utilize as or different programming that we could do? So I think we need to look at all of those kinds of items. And I think also, when you talk about arts. And you look at other things, what facilities do we have where we could utilize, um, or kind of enhance what we have? Because we have very little in that arena. We can talk about arts. We have a lot of sports. Uh, we've done a good job, I think, on that side of it. Um, we've gotten a lot better on the, uh, female side, on the girl's side, as far as bringing in. Uh, areas that could be better utilized for softball and other sports. Uh, but we still are lacking in that arena as well. But for sure, in the arts arena, we are lacking tremendously. So, yeah, those are my quick points, if, if they're quick.
Yeah, that's great. Even as a survey, you can add more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chavez, and I'll move on to Councilmember Coralejo.
Um, yes, I actually just, uh, really loved, you know, when you were giving out kind of like your points of what you're looking at. Um, for the, uh, master plan, I really liked, uh, just hearing that you brought up history and culture. Uh, we have a lot of culture and I think as, as our city's growing, that's definitely something that I don't want to lose. Um, so, you know, I think incorporating that into, you know, our park areas and recreation areas is, uh, you know, vital. For us as a, as a city.
Yeah.
Um, and then I hope I don't get in trouble with my daughter. This is something that she wanted to come to bring up during public comments, but she's in the swim team, so she wasn't able to. But, um, she really has been talking a lot about fruit trees and I don't know if that's the wrong. If you're the right person to bring that up to, but she's been saying, Mom, why can't we put fruit trees so that people can just go and grab fruit and eat it? So to her, it just seems like something real simple. Um, and so she has been talking about that quite a bit. So I think that would be awesome. Just, you know, you're at the park, you grab the fruit and, and you eat it. Or, you know, someone who maybe, you know, might need food, can just go and grab it. So, um. That was something else. And then I think, uh, the last thing. Uh, I guess that I have is just, uh, restrooms. I think that's always kind of been an issue regarding myself, being a, a child and coming to the parks. That they close early or they're not open on weekends. Um, or they close before five because staff, public works has to go home. So. Um, you know, of course, we don't want vandalism or graffiti, uh, or whatnot, but I feel like there has to be some kind of solution. And maybe you have one for us or some ideas on what we can do to have, you know, the, the facilities open for the park goers, but still, you know. Take care of our asset. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation, for the inquiry and to see what we want. I've already taken your survey. Um, I thought I could have done it a bit more, uh, it's kind of like blam a little bit, uh, you know, we can put a whole lot of stuff in there, but that's it. Um, it's still getting it out there and we had an opportunity to see what we're looking for. I think one of the things that we're lacking here in comparison to other communities, um, areas where we can gather. So barbecue spots, uh, the whole family go, let's say on a Fourth of July, those type of things, coming into town. Um. A couple of the items that I mentioned on, on the survey, um, the dilapidated. And fortunately, we have the president of the school board here, their court, tennis courts down. It's nice little tennis courts, but you can't use it. They just allow it to go to. Now, it's, it's in terrible shape. Can't use it. Ours is terrible. Been out there the last couple of weekends. The kids have been dragging me out there. And it's, was used as an in toward soccer site, the court needs to be taken back because not every place, soccer, baseball. You know, basketball, those kind of things. And we've had those and we have those items, uh, for those individuals now. So we've done, this council has done an excellent job on that. In addition to, I think the parks would benefit of some color. I mean, anytime you see a community with, we have buy-in as for their every given murals. And that, you know, sponsoring, there's a respect for the neighborhood for the most part and the city and the community themselves. As far as the different colors and the appreciation. And then leaning on the culture and thereby having our culture in there as well to, uh, be, you know, displayed on, on, uh, the murals. And, you know, gaining, gaining feedback from the community as well. And I think lastly, um, talking about other sports, well, bike paths, um, throughout the city. Uh, you, I know some of you guys will ride your bikes around here and I'll, I'll ride my bike, not often enough, but guilty. Um, but, uh, the bike paths and stuff, you're going through the parks themselves for your kids. If you're teaching your kids how to, uh, ride your bike, uh, nice little bike path through there. Uh, maintenance friendly parks, uh, one that's not so demanding and labor intensive for staff. Because, you know, everybody loves a beautiful park, but park has to be clean, water, you know, all the good stuff that has, has to be done with that. And then lastly, um, it's, I've seen this in other communities where they have a big, um, the big, uh, uh, like a checkerboard. Or chess, chess thing, uh, big pieces. And then, you know, normally you can attach them by somehow so they don't steal them because, you know, it looks like they're in stealth. But somewhere in those areas where people can gather and possibly do that, uh, areas where you want to do your tai chi, those things, things as well. So that I, I see us have the ability, we strategically plan our parks, that we could do that. That a small park like the Jola Doesn't Park, this small park, maybe we do some smaller. Um, you know, with those type of, uh, where it's the chess boards and those kind of things like that. And then the bigger parts for the barbecue area and stuff. So those are my thoughts, just. So, yeah, thank you.
Great. Yeah, and thank you for taking the survey already.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for those comments too, because I think in just in terms of, you know, uh, just with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and, you know, and I know everybody does surveys. But if we can really make a more interactive, a little bit more, you know, uh, just different elements, color, just, you know, visual. That would be easier instead of just a bunch of select here, select there. Um, just to make it more interactive. Yeah, I think that would be really beneficial, given the, the vast demographics that we have in our community.
Um, that's definitely planned for the next rounds. We'll have, just as to, each one of our next sets. When we come back, we'll have a visioning sessions and have more of it now that we here and see things will bring. Photos and imagery that is in keeping with what you're looking for. We'll also do it online as a visual survey. So people will be able to not only see pictures that we do, but also upload photos that they think are going to be exciting and interesting for them. And so, and then they'll do another one of those rounds when sort of talk about, um, strategies and sort of recommendations. They'll have the opportunity to do more interactive elements. So, yeah, this is sort of like standard. But then we'll kind of continue to sort of build out those different visual. And I think the visual is really important. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you. So let me just give you my comments before I take it out to the public for their comments. Um, I think for me, yeah, I think utilization of, as was said already, I think it's important, our parks that we really utilize them and create spaces where people can gather. Because we have a lot of young families. And so being able to make sure that they include gazebo, they include benches and, and with shade, right? Um, and that we have, you know, just the barbecue pits that are a little bit kind of easier to maintain as well. But there's, uh, ability for that. Um, I, I think for me, one of the other elements is, you know, obviously we talked about wind. Um, but really looking at how can we creatively utilize our wind to also produce energy or to also have some connection of, of, you know. You know, climate action resiliency that's included within our parks, um, sustainability. And so capturing that wind, I think is really important. I mean, we get sun, but I think the wind is really what we can really, um, you know, hone into. And capitalize on that. And then, um, connectivity to our national park. I think that's really important too, is how do we really bring in those different elements? And that connectivity to, to what we have, the national parks and our corridors on the, uh, the wine trail. Um, also parks that really take into consideration, um, special needs, children with special needs. I know we have one park, but I think all of our parks moving forward really need to have some of those elements. Uh, you know, children with various, um, you know, abilities, um, to be able to be included. And I agree in terms of the arts and local history, how do we make sure that we're including that in the parks? And, and, you know, where does that make, that make sense? And I also think some of the native flowers that we can really capitalize on and include them as part of not just, obviously, you know, they're. Just, you know, drought resistant, but, um, utilizing that and promoting also some of our species that we have close, you know. That, that we have, how do we really incorporate that? Um, wifi is obviously really important and it's just, you know, as, as we move forward, you know, technology is, is something that's really important. And being able to have our youth out there, we have, obviously, you know, with having Hartnell here, I think it's really important to really be able to promote. Also being able to do stuff outside, um, outdoors and having that ability for wifi capacity in all of our parks and, or how do we include that? Um, and then for me, it's really, you know, the bike and trail systems that we don't have. And I know other areas have, like in the peninsula, the connectivity, you can bike from, starting from Castroville all the way down to Marina, all the way down to Monterey. Uh, we have, you know, the four cities that are not that far from us here, but how do we start? And it's, it's master plan, right? Incorporating some of those regional, um, you know, trails with bikes, with walking corridors. And start really building upon that. I know we have the freeway that divides us from, you know, the, the wine trail. But how do we make that connection? How do we start, you know, building those, those paths and creating that master plan that really supports our community? Um, walking outdoors, we saw that just with the opening of Orchard Lane. I mean, it's just, it's been massive for what that's been able to do with our community because that's, everybody's on that, on Orchard Lane. So that's only one lane. How do we really make sure we extend it throughout our city and really incorporate that? Um, and just, you know, if we with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem more amenities in our parks, you know. So people can, we see it in other parks where you have the, uh, you know, the big chair or what, what else? Yeah, I mean, all these little things that, you know, people can go and enjoy that in the park. And how do we do it in a manner that obviously is not going to be vandalized and, you know, respected, um, in doing that? And so, um, I think those were the key ones for me. It's just making sure that we have, you know, that connectivity with the bike, bike trails and paths. And how do we start envisioning a regional kind of, uh, path, uh, system, trail system? Oh, and then lighting, lighting, I think for our parks is really important because we know now with some of the parks that we have, obviously that wasn't included as part of, you know, as part of the elements of the park. So as we are, you know, moving forward, that, you know, how are we looking at lighting and also trash bins? I know sometimes we just have a regular trash can, but how are we encouraging, you know, other forms of not just trash, but recycle? How do we include those elements also within our parks? Um, and pet friendly. I know, you know, we previously had a councilwoman that was really, you know, adamant about, uh, pets. And we know that we see a lot of our families that have pets. So how do we really make sure that we don't have just one or two parks that are pet friendly, but that that becomes part of, you know, an element that we have in our community? And those are my, my comments. So thank you. So at this point, then I will take it out to the public. Oh, council member. But you have no, okay. So I will take it out to the public and I will begin with the public that's joining us here in our, in our council chambers. So if there's any comments on this item, it's item B dash two.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Elvandela and I'm going to be joining you guys tomorrow. So I'm excited. And also I wanted just to, you know, hit up with everyone's comments, but another thing too is when I was a teen mom and heading. And I had practice with my kids, the thing that I was missing is because, okay, we're moms, you know, we have the multitask. So we have to take her to practice, but mine misses like we working out. It's like, okay, is there like a little workout station exercise, you know? So that I can put my time to while I'm waiting for my kids' practice time. So that's the thing that I would like to, you know, see, because we see it, I see it at other parks in, um, where I work around in, in Monterey. And that would be really beneficial, because beneficial, because I also jog, you know, here in Salida and then I go to Lindy Park and go to Mill Ramis. So it's a good one mile. So it's, it's, um, it's great to see these parks, you know, growing. And then I'd like to see more to get exercise workout stations in, in parks, you know, this will give parents an opportunity, not just to be on the phone and just be warm or cold with the wind. But, you know, just to get outside and just have some exercise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, José Yara resident in Salida, uh, home on Freehead Street, so that. Um, so I just wanted to share a couple of weeks ago, I got back from Mexico. And, uh, my parents and my in-laws have properties out there, a ranch, nice, you know, peaceful living out there, you can go out there and hang out. Um, and then my in-laws have a property also in the city. And so I enjoy going up there about two, three times in, out of the year. And one of the things that I enjoyed, I couldn't figure out why it is that I like going over there. Um, obviously the culture, family, friends, what have you, but I also like the social life out there. Um, when I go out there in the evenings, you know, I can sit there and watch TV, Netflix, what have you, but I can also do that here. I don't go out to Mexico for that. I actually go out there to socialize, meet new people, go sit out at the jardín, the park. And so, um, one of the suggestions I had and what I really liked was, yeah, we could have, um, youth out at the bar, kids running around. Um, but the jardín, we had also the elderly people, you know, who would sit there, tell you about the history, families, what have you. I love going out there, sitting and eating a paleta and just enjoying that, you know, my time, getting to meet people. Um, and mostly, you know, the elderly folks, because they like to talk, they like to talk a lot. And I think that's what we're missing here as well. Uh, my dad's getting older and, you know, that's what I think he enjoys out in the racho, going out and talking to, you know, his community, the people in the village. And my in-laws, same thing, you know, we enjoy going out there and talking. I don't know that we do that here unless you're in the community, you know, at a church. Your kids are involved in sports and school, what have you. And I think we need to look at that avenue as well and using our parks for our aging population as well. And for those that are interested in just sitting out there and meeting a paleta to just enjoy it, you know, something to consider. Um, but I do appreciate all the other suggestions as well. Um, one area, you know, that we also need to take a look at is our heating. You know, it's windy and it's cold in the evenings also, so people don't like to go to parks, don't want to be outside unless you have a heated patio or something, you know. We may want to take a look at that as well, you know, providing those amenities as, um, also. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other final comments from those that are joining us here in the chambers?
Including the council?
So the, you know, the, in the chambers? So, okay, so let me take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. So any comments from those that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, I see no comment. So, um, so we'll bring it back. Thank you so much. I don't know if there's any final thoughts. I think we got a lot of public, a lot of input from the council and, and we'll obviously be seeing you also and interacting and giving you our feedback one-on-one. But, um, thank you. And I want to encourage, you know, if this is a moment to do it, to really encourage our community, to make sure that you take the survey, make sure that your input is heard. Your voices are heard, um, to be able to imagine what we want Salida to look like in terms of our master, um, uh, plan for our parks and recreation. So encouraging everyone to do that.
And I'll just maybe hand over the flyer to you, so you can also have that link and put it in chat. So, um, thank you. We did everything and I can't wait to, you again.
Thank you.
Mayor, when I said that I couldn't make enough final, final comment, something that came out. When Josefina was talking about Mexico, we do, a, a lot of, we do have a lot of people that that's, uh, they don't have the proper venues. For instance, in the, in, in the jardín, in the garden, there is a, uh, kiosk. So we don't have, we're the only city in, in the central valley that doesn't have a kiosk. Uh, back then, when I was little, we used to go to the back, go to the back, um, that place. And they always have somebody playing their music. It doesn't have to be something famous, it's just regular people that will go up there and play music and have fun. And if you, if you drive on, um, on Front Street, either in the afternoons or in the weekends, you always see a lot of gentlemen. Uh, sitting down in chairs that they have. The, the, one of the problems is that on the other side, we don't have anything. So we don't have, uh, uh, places with, uh, trees or shadow, things like that, that they can, uh, just sit and enjoy themselves. The, the other thing that I have, um, is that we, uh, a lot of our young, uh, people like soccer. And even though there is a lot of activities in that matter, there is something that people enjoy a lot and that is indoor soccer, soccer. I know that it is difficult to create an indoor soccer right here and unless we use that community center. But is there any possibility to be something like that, but outside? You know, so people can play, uh, indoor soccer outside. Yeah.
Yeah, than, thank you, Councilwoman Procavera for that. Yeah, but the gazebo, I know that was something that, you know, it, it is something that we want to see. It's going to happen in our new park, but if we have it within our parks, I think that's important. Yeah, so thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for that input. We really look forward to, you know, uh, uh, robust, you know, recreation plan. That is going to help us for the future growth of Salida. Thank you. Okay, council, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is item B dot three, resolution number fifty-nine fifteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida approving an agreement for consulting services with pavement engineering, Inc. For an amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand five forty-three for the pavement management program plan on engineering services. And authorizing the interim city manager to execute said agreement on behalf of the city. I will turn this over to Oscar.
Hi, um, good evening, mayor, council members. Yes, uh, we are excited to, uh, bring this one to the, to the city of Salida. I'm going to highlight some of the, uh, agenda, um, the sub report on the agenda. And I want to start with the, as you know, the city of Salida, a nearby city, is received a major expanse from TMC. One of the conditions we keep receiving this one is to develop, uh, pavement management program. Uh, the city of Salida, another city must send an annual program compliance report to our transportation authority, Monterey County. And on the last report, the la- the last report, sorry, uh, sent on December last year indicated that the city's street are in good conditions. So we would like to keep it in the same conditions or better, obviously. Uh, so for that reason, uh, on early December, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, a staff selected from the approved list, the consultant firm, BEI. Uh, we request a proposal for the pavement management program. And, uh, engineer department received this proposal on January fourteenth, uh, this year. Which is, uh, attached to this resolution as exceeded A. So engineering has reviewed the BEI's proposal and determined that they have a firm experience to perform the services required for the. Payment and management program plan. And tonight, I would like to, uh, introduce Mr. Joe Riery. From BEI, which is the president, and I'm inviting you to the podium and introduce himself and provide additional information and response on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
It's our parents, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Joe Riery. I'm a senior pencil engineer with pavement engineering. Uh, we're a civil engineering firm that's been around for thirty-six years. This is our thirty-sixth year. Uh, we serve cities and counties throughout California. Our, our specialty is working with just pavements and with just cities and counties. That's where, where we do the bulk of our work. Um, we're excited to deal with the work with the city of Salida. Um, we, after working with the, with the staff, Dawn and Alex and Oscar. We, uh, chose to present or provide a three-pronged approach to our, our, uh, with our proposal. Um, the first part is to address your requirements with AMC. And that is to, for, to prepare and provide a report to them. And by developing a pavement management system and, um. Assessing all of your city streets and coming up with something that we like to call it a PCI, which man, which means it's a pavement condition index. I gotta watch myself just a little bit. I really like talking about pavements. I've been trying to calm myself just a little. I need to let you know, I'm really looking forward to coming back. And once we have the assessment done and presenting our findings with you. Um, showing you where your streets are, talking about the plan, talking about pavement in general. Um, pavement is not a stationary medium, it's our material. It, once you place it, it starts deteriorating. And so you need to stay on it. Um, and working with it and having a plan is really important, um, in, in terms of. Where do you want to use your limited resources and what you want to try and do? And so part of what, what we have proposed to do is to develop a multi-year plan. Which will allow the city then to be able to be proactive in, uh, selecting projects. And, cause you just don't say, okay, I'm going to do this street and, and improve it. There's all kinds of other coordination that needs to happen with utilities. There's trying to determine what kind of, what treatments are going to be the best and going to give you the longest life. And so that's what we're going to be trying to, uh, do with that task number one. Task number two and three are also very important when it comes to, uh, pavement and pavement management systems. Task two is design related, um, services, uh, that once the plan is developed and done. We anticipate being able to help the city provide a, uh, or develop a plan set that will be able to be bid. Construction documents that will be able to bid out to the community and implement, start implementing the plan. Uh, task three is, uh, providing some testing and inspection, material testing and inspection services. That will help the city know that they're getting the right material and that it's going to last like it's supposed to. Pavements aren't cheap, they're really expensive. And, and so you want to be able to make sure that you're doing the right thing with them. I, I'll stop right there, because I'm going to probably like watch into how pavements deteriorate and all this really kind of other exciting stuff. Um, I can provide, um, information. Oh, I, I'm joined today. Virtually by my colleague, Joe Seeley, who couldn't be here for the meeting, but, um, is online. And so if you throw like a really tough question, I'm going to throw it to him to answer it. And, cause you won't see him sweat. Anyway, um, I'll open it up to questions for you, um. If, if you have any.
Yeah, th- thank you so much, Joe. So two Joes, right?
Yeah. Perhaps there is, but it would be really scary to have a hundred Joes running around.
No, thank you so much. And thank you for your enthusiasm. Yeah, makes it easy, right? Everybody's Joe. But thank you for your enthusiasm in terms of pavement. Yeah, I really appreciate that. So, uh, let me open it up for any questions that the council may have, and then we'll take it out to the public if there's any questions and then we'll bring it back. Um, for just any final comments and approval. So, um, I'll just open it up to the council if there is anyone that has any questions.
Sure, uh, thank you, Joe, for that presentation and I could tell by that energy how much you're doing that. Payment, uh, one of the things is, uh, the first thing you're going to do is an assessment of our current roads, correct? And then, uh, being able to give us an itemized, and I, I looked at all of your task one, task two and task three, because there's many of our roads. And you hear this, council members, I know I'm not the only one, where people complain, you know, the conditions of the roads. And one of the most prudent things we can do is to maintain them until, until they get, you know, in terrible shape. I don't know, like some of those news stories where there are holes and, uh, the potholes are creating black tires and all these other things. But it's some of, you know, uh, maintenance is to ensure that we do that. So I, I'm glad to see that we're, we're in one accord with this, this back and forth is forward, uh, Oscar and, um, we get going with the plan. It's all happening.
Thank you. Um, so I'll just kind of go, go this way, Councilmember Procavera, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, uh, first of all, I was going to say that was a very thorough report I read it and it actually got me excited about, about pavement. So, um, I, I really like the, uh, you know, besides the assessment and all that, I really, um, like the, uh, oversight during the construction. And most of I was, um, very impressed with the, the fact that they're sending me, um, lacking in the, in the material that's being used. Um, I believe the report said that within one day, you guys would let us know so we could contact our contractor and make sure that. The material they're using is up to par. And of course, I would say was thousands of dollars and headaches. Um, the question I did have was, uh, I did see on there that it excludes pre-marking. Um, when you're doing the, uh, the coring of the location. So is that something that you guys would let our staff know? Where, where you would need the marking? Cause I think it's every, what is it, every so many feet?
Yeah, it's every, so what we're talking about, and it's a great question, is in task two. When we identify which streets that we're actually going to be designing, we actually use, utilize California. Um, test method, uh, from Caltrans to be able to evaluate the structural integrity of, of the pavement. How is it really performing right now? Task one is based on a visual review of the pavements and, and measuring all of the existing, um, defects and deteriorations. And that's what allows us to develop the pavement condition index. But the task two, we dig, we dive deeper into the pavement and understanding how is it really performing. Um, and so we do that with using deflection testing. We actually, um, measure deflections of the pavement. By applying, uh, we call it a falling weight deflectometer, really exciting stuff. We just call it an FWD for short, because we're always into acronyms, PCIs, FWDs. Anyway, uh, but to answer your question specifically, we also need to do coring of the pavement and understand what the structural section is. And, uh, because you're, you're dealing with the, uh, just the pavement layer itself. Uh, the pavement and, and the, um, aggregate base underneath it, there's, there's no utilities in there that, that are, are buried. And so we're able to be, um, very efficient and quick at, at collecting the data that way. So does that answer your question?
Um, yes, it actually does. And then also just a follow-up question, would we need to put like any no parking notifications on any streets? That wouldn't, no, okay.
We provide the traffic control, you know, with our coring vehicle. And, and it's usually, well, depending on if it's an arterial street, it's a follow vehicle with, with flashing arrow boards. Cause, yeah, during the coring process, we may only be in a stationary position for about ten minutes before we pick up and move to the next spot. So it's a, it's a mobile, um, traffic control that we are implementing. And we're always moving, moving and moving down the road.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will, um, go over to Councilmember Chalice if she has any questions and then Councilmember Procavera.
Sure, um, thank you. Uh, just, uh, I'm, I'm glad that we're able to take on the task of having to give these reports and these updates to TMC. I know the first year that we had to give an update to Measure-X, uh, to their, uh, the update that we normally give, we were late. And we were one of three cities that was late of the twelve cities, uh, in that first update. Since then, we've, we've been on time every, every single time, but to take on that task and be able to do it in a thorough way, that's great. Um, in regards to, uh, looking at the analysis that's going to be done, you know, you, I think you gave a lot of information over here to, uh, to city council member Cora León. In regards to the process that you will be utilizing. Uh, so I'm just wondering, are there different, uh, as far as how thick the pavement needs to be? Or how thick the, uh, the, the type of, of materials that has to be? The the type of of materials that has to be when we're talking about truck routes, when we're talking about. Uh, say, Front Street, which is considered a highway, when we're talking about Met's Road, that's also considered the same. Uh, when we're talking about uh the area off of Miranda Road, when we're heading up to uh uh off-ramp or on-ramp. Uh, those types of things. Cause I I what I've noticed is that. Gabaland seems to be getting a little bit more deteriorated than they had been in the past. It had been awesome condition. And now you're starting to see a little bit of deterioration in part because now it's a truck route and we're seeing the the heavy trucks that are going that way. And plus all the construction that has been happening for the last uh few years. Uh, the same thing for Miranda Road, which everybody uses to leave to go to the north uh for the most part. And then we're starting to see it in other areas as well. And so I just wanted to know, are there differences between those? And then also, um, you know, cause if you're doing the corner, you'll figure out exactly that 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 issue. But that that's kind of why I wanted to kind of have a better idea.
Great question. And a very important question. Uh, when you talk about pavement, there's there's two factors that really play into. How thick the pavement structure needs to be. The first thing is you identify what's underneath the pavement. What is it gonna be built on? Is is the uh subgrade soil stable or is it just a muddy mess? And so what you you wanna do is you wanna understand what's underneath that. We have test methods to be able to do that. We actually call that an R-value test, the resistance value. Um, that's the first part. So what's underneath the pavement? The second part is what's gonna be on the pavement? What kind of loading is it gonna be able to have? And and the correlation is just simply this, the lower the R-value. And the higher the the loading, the thicker you need to be with your pavement section. And and it's really that simple with it. And so when you're talking about. Roads that are getting an excessive amount of traffic loading, which by the way, is really happening even with our. Our residential streets, which by and large, you were designed to be able to handle the the usual. Passenger vehicles with an occasional moving truck and the mail truck and, you know, that was kind of it, you know, once a week garbage truck. Now you were getting three garbage trips per week. Who's talking about a fourth one? Uh, oh, and by the way, one of the things that I'll show you when I, when I come back, one, one garbage truck is equal to about nine thousand vehicles. Just regular passenger vehicles. So again, from a pavement design point of view, it's not the busyness of the road. It's really how how heavy are the is the um loading on the road. And um, Tim, I already getting really excited, like I said, pull back. Um, but when we're, when we're talking about these these roads that you are, this the the heavier volume roads. Or arterial roads usually are the ones carrying the heavier loads. Um. Those vehicles you need to account for, and we do by by developing what's called the traffic index. And that traffic index is a culmination of all of the axle weights that are gonna be um. That that pavement is gonna be seen. And so I like to simplify it down to thinking of the of the pavement design. And that this culmination of of all of these uh axle loads. Think of it like a bank account, when every time a heavy vehicle goes over it, there's a withdrawal. And then eventually, the bank account just goes to zero. And so if you have an underdesigned road and load it up really heavily. Spending beyond your means, you know, analogy, um, then the pavement deteriorates very, very quickly. And so we we count for those kind of things in the design.
Good. And the reason I bring it up, Joe, is because a a few years back, just just a few years back, county in the city of Salinas, county Monterey, city Salinas. On Harris Road, right outside of the city Salinas, uh, city's city Salinas limits. Part of it is still within the city limits. Uh, rebuilt uh all, pretty much all of Harris Road. And within less than a year, the county part was completely destroyed, even though they had the same traffic going through it. But the section that the city built was completely intact. And so my question for it, and the reason I'm bringing up that question is because. Both entities knew exactly the the weight of the of of the load that were going through. Both of them knew exactly the traffic counts that were going through, yet they had different contractors build those two parts of the same road. But one was completely destroyed less than a year, nine months, and that thing was completely destroyed. The other part was not. And so that's why I wanted to bring that up, because I wanna make certain that if we're going to be paying for consulting services, that we're making certain that we do know what those. Uh, heavy loads are and what toll it takes. And if it's in the old parts of town, which we've seen some 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 damage over the years. And we need to make certain that they're taken care of, but also in some of the newer parts where uh there's been some work that's been done that I don't know if was the best. Work that is done. So if we're going to be doing this and spending on consultants, that we're looking at those items.
Um, I agree. And I will just say that we helped advise the city of Salinas on on their road, so. That hopefully that achieved the confidence to go.
Yeah, compared, yes, they were built exactly at the same time. So yes.
Thank you for those questions, council member Chad, and council member uh Gabriela.
Yeah, and and the enthusiasm that I come from too. Um, yes, incredible. And there's a lot of information right there, that some parts that I didn't understand. For instance, what is uh CP uh PCI? And how do you determine that if uh there is a long uh long street and then a small street? And can both be seventy-one, at seventy-one or better or worse? So how do you, how does that determine whether he needs um full fix or just a patching around?
And another really good question. I, and if you let me, I'll turn you all into pavement experts. And can part enthusiasm and where you just will go to sleep every night with a smile. But uh. To answer your question, the PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. And we use that. Um, it's a scale from one hundred down to zero. And so it's a hundred point scale that we use. And we use it to be able to help identify, uh, it it's a budgeting tool, really is what the the pavement management program really is all about. It's being able to do long-term forecasts and scenarios like if we put this much money in. What kind of improvements can we get? Or if our goal is this, what is it gonna take to get there? And so that's what what we use the the PCI for, or the paving condition index. To answer your question, to develop the PCI, we actually go out and we take a road. And and of course, it has whatever distresses it might have. And and the program that we use is called Street Saber. And and it looks at eight different types of pavement distresses. And and um. Like I said, I'm gonna try and hold back, but those pavement distresses each are depending on the amount of of distress is there. And the how um, how bad it is, whether it's just slight or moderate or severe. Will affect uh a deduct factor. And so everything starts deducting from one hundred, down, down, down. So you could have a major road that's a seventy-one, and you can have minor roads that are seventy-one. Just depending on how all of the deteriorations add up. Does that help?
Yes, yeah. Uh, yeah, cause uh the first thing that came to mind is that we have a papa right here in front of the church. And I go through that several times a day, cause I I dropped my my kids to school on my pass by. And always looking at, so my 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 thinking was, well, um, most of the, most of the main street is pretty in in pretty good shape. But that little thing is very, very deep. So it could damage somebody's uh car at that moment. So um, my my first confusion or my first um misunderstanding was. When I started reading the um the document, is that I thought that you guys were gonna do that work. But it's not doing the work, you're just um advising or letting us know who's uh. Uh, what parts to fix or what is better to fix, uh, create some some sort of a um. In the door, in the doors, yeah.
Right.
Or or what is first and determining which one is that that there is to fix. Now, you also mentioned that your team goes to a conference. Is that something that our public works do as well or to do uh something?
The conference that we do, um, I think you're referring to the the certification that 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 are.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm. Probably knowing my conversations with Don and and Oscar, they're gonna. He's gonna be the one that's gonna be going there. Uh, we've already been told that he's the guy that's gonna handle the computer. And so um, hey, send him to there and we can get him. Then you'll have a guy that every time he stands up, he'll be so excited.
Well, thank you, thank you. So uh, yeah, thank you for those comments. Yeah, thank you. We really appreciate your enthusiasm. I just have a couple of questions and I'll take it up to the public. Um, and then bring it back to council if there's any final comments on that. Thank you for that. I guess one of my questions is, I know obviously this is part of Measure X with TMZ. Um, but my question is, did we not have this plan before? Like, I don't remember. Someone as enthusiastic as you coming forth and providing us um this information. So did we, do we not have a plan? Is that why we're developing this plan?
Uh, correctly, Don, if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we have some similar in the past.
We don't, but it's a criteria of Tamsi, is it?
So there's an update that's done every year, that's done and they've done it and they've they've gone and assessed and they've used, I think, different consultants. And piece things together to do the the plan. I think that's what Don has done in the past. I think Oscar as well. I think they've. Used the consultants that they have that are doing the different work. They've gone out themselves and do the work. And I think that having somebody that just specified, is just working on one thing will make it a lot simpler and a lot faster than.
It was like, you know, something that it was, uh, you know, like a preventive maintenance.
Right.
People year by year, but not on a specific paving, paving uh program.
Okay, so now now this will give us a plan that we can utilize for the next couple of years to be able to determine. The roads that need to be fixed based on the conditions that the plan's gonna provide to us. So I have a question then, if that's the case, then I know that we had a budget allocation uh for Front Street. And there was a two point four million um allocation for this fiscal year to provide improvements. So is that Front Street gonna be part of this pavement plan? Or is the the improvements different than what is being assessed through this pavement improvement plan?
No, uh, that Front Street is not gonna be, we're gonna use a measure expand as well as FB one. But that's a different project that we're doing with the consultant firm Harris.
But it doesn't include, so what are we doing? If we have two point four million um to be able to make improvements to to Front Street?
Well, Front Street is gonna be the limit. It's gonna be from Miranda all the way to where the uh the on-ramp is, off-ramp. I'm sorry, on-ramp, all the way to Nessus Road, rehabilitation of the asphalt. That also will include rehabilitation of sidewalks, areas of sidewalk, as you know, they've been complaining about. You know, because of the roots of the trees, we need to repair those uh those sidewalks. As well, we're gonna do some improvements with the lightning. And probably provide some areas where we can, you know, let people include some benches in order to let people sit down.
So it's gonna be other elements besides the pavement?
Well, the Front Street project is a major maintenance project. It's a complete street project as opposed to just the pavement. And so up till twenty nineteen, we did use Street Saber um as a database, as a pavement maintenance system. And we had annual projects. After that, we went to a different system that Tamsi didn't acknowledge. And so we had to convert it. And now we're starting back and we're catching up. We can reuse our old Street Saber, catch it up for the last four years and go forward. We have, so the street system's worth, or you know, it's a hundreds of million dollar asset. We have roughly a half a million dollars. Maybe a little bit more to do maintenance projects. The Front Street one's an extra big one. It's our, it's our Front Street. It's our uh major aesthetic. It's got the tree issues. That's a major thing. The payment's not that bad, but we're gonna do the payments well.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that, because I know that's pretty significant in terms of the amount of money that we're investing there. So that it it's still, you're gonna be still able to analyze it as part of this plan. But but I know that portions of Front Street, though, especially. I wanna say um. Where the um, going down the bridge during that, that. Yeah, and so that's really, I mean, I know obviously there's more trucks and so that's pretty in bad condition.
Right, we're assessing like Oscar said, from off-ramp to off-ramp. One of the key things we're doing in this Front Street project, though, is the trees. They're slowing up the sidewalks and the businesses can't open their doors.
Yeah.
That's critical and time sensitive.
Okay, so.
And then we're doing the pavement as well, because we have to, because we're using that fund.
So will that pavement that you're doing include the analysis from the?
No, this won't be done. The analysis won't be done till this summer. And we're gonna be reconstructing Front Street this summer. We know what it means.
Okay, okay, so you know how much thickness of that pavement is needed. So I guess my concern is there's so much investment in it that we don't have to go back and then we determine that's not what's needed. And then we put out more money into that, because it is a big investment with the two point four, a big investment with the hundred and ninety-five thousand. Or ninety, hundred and ninety-six thousand to be able to create a plan.
So we'll take the recommendation when we get it from the engineering design in Front Street. The Joes will peer review it as part of the, you know, yes, that we agree. You're not spending too much money. You're doing the the best. You can look upon your have and then go forward.
But th- thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so let me take it, the little my my questions and concerns. So let me take it up to the public if there's any comments from the public that are joining us here in our chambers. Okay, so let me take it up to the public that is um joining us on Zoom. Any comments on item B dash three? Okay, see, now then I'll bring it back to the council if there's any final comments or questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Members of the council, I wonder if I could quickly share my enthusiasm for pavement.
All right.
Uh, you mentioned the investment, and that's the significance of the pavement management plan. Because an early and regular investment in pavement maintenance saves uh millions of dollars in street reconstruction. Extends the life of the street. And so we will use the plan as the guide to our multi-year capital improvement program. So that we're paying attention to these investments in order to not just provide quality street, but to prevent. Future reconstruction expenses uh down the line.
Yeah, thank you. And just my final thought on that, because it is, it is gonna include ADA, right? Cause I know that ADA components. No, not on the ramps.
The ma- maintenance does. If we do a big enough project, we have to assess that all the ramps are up to date.
Oh.
But some of the minor maintenance, we just prolong the life of the street.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, we're excited as well about pavement. So I'll bring it back to the council to see if there's a motion to.
Make the motion, I'm I'm excited.
So there's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Okay, so we have a first and a second, uh, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Joe, and thank you so much, Joe Seeley, for also joining us virtually. Thank you, Don, and thank you, Oscar.
Thank you. We're excited to have somebody that just does payment, that's enthused about it, that will save the city money and get the program going.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. At this point, we'll go into our last uh business item of the day. And that item G dash four, resolution number fifty-nine sixteen and fifty-nine fifteen. A resolution of the city council, the city of Soledad approving an amendment to the non-exclusive consulting services agreement. For owners, representatives and project management services with MMS engineers. And authorizing the city managers to execute said agreement. Amendment number two, on behalf of the city of Soledad, for the Mets Orchard Park Development Project in the amount of forty-five thousand. And I will turn it over to Oscar.
Good evening again. Yes, correct. Uh, to provide you with a background regarding uh Orchard Lane Park. Uh, on February, on February twenty fifth to twenty twenty, California State Parks, the water of the sea of Soledad. With seven point six million for the construction of the Orchard Lane Park project. MNS engineers were selected to provide non-exclusive consulting services and project management for this uh project. On May sixth, twenty twenty, an amendment was approved under resolution five five three three to MNS engineer. Uh, as maybe you remember, the city council awarded a contract for that destruction of Orchard Lane Park on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. With Monterey and New Zealand engineers, N P E. Uh, Orchard Lane Park is getting to the final stages of completion. Uh, we are. Uh, we are contemplating possibly to do the ribbon cutting by this summer. Thankfully. And, uh, MNS engineer has reached out to the city requesting an extension. For, uh, project management services. For the subject services through the end of this project. It, it is important also to mention that this original budget requested and are describing exceeding eight attached to this resolution. Will also help in preparing the required project completion package for, following the requirements and for the grant agreement. So, uh, engineering has reviewed the request from MNS engineers and determined. That previously approved level effort was insufficient. So it is recommended to extend the management functions until the project ends. And with this, uh, I think that we have, uh, joined on by Lu Su, Mr. Greg from MNS engineers. And I would like to, uh, let, uh, Mr. Uh, Greg, if you can respond or provide additional information regarding this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Greg, uh, you there?
Yes, um, um. Uh, Madam Mayor and, and City Council, uh, we, our MNS engineer has been, um, yeah, involved in, in this, uh, contract for providing. Owners representative and project management, uh, services, uh, which essentially constitute overseeing, uh, all the activities of, uh, of other. Um, consultants and vendors that are responsible for the delivery of the park project. So we act, we act, have acted as the city's, uh, owners representative, ensuring. Uh, that all activities that are taken for the design and construction of the project, uh, are being done in a manner that is, um, um, to the. Uh, benefit of, of the city and the project and in also in accordance with, uh, the grant agreement requirements. Uh, with regard to the grant agreement requirements, we've been providing, um, grant administration services. Uh, to reconcile all invoicing that has been associated with the project and to assure that, uh, that those records, that reconciled invoicing has been used. Uh, for repayment through the grant agreement. Uh, we'll be continuing to provide those services until the end of the project as, uh, uh, as Oscar was just describing. So. Welcome. Any questions?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Greg, for that, um. Additional information. So let me, uh, bring it to the council and then I'll take it out to the public. So council, any, any questions or comments?
I have one. So I see in one of the pages, I see the, uh, table. Do you guys have, uh, two hundred and fifty-three, nine hundred and then all itemized it? And then there's, um, the second to the last estimated budget shortfall. And it's forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety, seventy-nine with six cents, but the. Uh, the request is only forty-five thousand. Are you guys gonna put that three hundred and seventy-nine? This is what I am.
Yeah, as, and since it is a estimate, uh, of the budget needed to, um, you know, carry these services through to the end of the project. Um, it, it, it's not, it's simply a round down as it should be sufficient to, um, the, the request should be sufficient, uh, to provide these services to the end of the project.
Yes, I was thinking that's, that's, the estimated shortfall is also, uh, shortfall in the request amount. No, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So, but it's fine. It's just run there, right? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, um, council.
Just, just, just one question, uh, either to Greg or to Oscar. So in regards to the delays that have happened, uh. Rain and other delays that have, that, that have caused for it to go on. Cause originally I think we had talked about possibly April, then we talked maybe May was the. Would, would be finalized and now we're talking in the summer. So because of those delays, that, that is the reason that we're going for this, uh, extension or this. Increase in the budget. Is that, is that part of the reason or?
Well, yeah, that's one of the main reasons, uh, because we have been having the delays with the material and equipment. So right now, uh, I'm very struggling. They, on my last meeting with, uh, you know, with the team. They, they said that they're expecting the restroom, which is a defabricated. They expect it until March. And that's the, you know, uh, if everything goes in a, in a perfect world. So that's why I'm trying to be conservative and, for the, for the, probably by summer. Okay, so we're gonna have that.
Okay. And then my last question, what happens if, let's say this restroom shows up in June? Um, are we going to have to come back and do another amendment to, to the contract? Is that?
I don't, I don't expect that one, uh, you know, across my fingers to receive that one by March, like they're saying, because that, that was like the latest data. We'll never see that.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for that. So just to be clear that it is, I mean, obviously it's based on the extension, but based on the supply chain shortages that have. Caused this to not get the supplies that were needed on a timely manner for project completion that we expected in spring.
All right. To the end of the.
Okay. That's good. I don't have any questions. Thank you for asking that. That was my question. So let me. If there's any, uh, members of the public that are joining us here, um, in the chambers that have any questions on item B dash four. Okay, let me take it out to those that are joining us virtually, any members of the public that, um, are joining us. I presume if there's any questions on item B dash four. Okay, see none, then I will bring it back, um. To the council for a motion to, uh, approve. If there is no other final comments.
So.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Okay, I have a second. So all in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. And we hopefully, you know, we're looking forward to having the grand opening in the summer. Yeah, we're almost there. So yeah, thank you. Okay. So at this time, then we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is city managers' oral report. And I will turn this over to, um, Ed.
Uh, Mayor members of the council, I want to provide for you and the community just an update on the events scheduled in February. Which are opportunities for the community to learn and engage with us about important subjects. All of these, um, discussed are on our website now or will be tomorrow. The first is a workshop. On February the eighth at five thirty PM at the community center. Uh, the primary purpose of that workshop is for the community provide in, to hear about and provide input into the Coalition of Housing Homeless Services group. Their plan for how to, uh, deal with homelessness. And the issue before the art community is how can Solidad support? That strategy and perhaps engage in our own. So if you have comments and concerns about homelessness. The unhoused community, this is an opportunity, uh, on February the eighth to learn about a strategy and to provide your input. Uh, a second meeting of importance is the city council's own special meeting that'll be on Saturday, February the eleventh at nine AM at the community center. This is the council's annual goal setting session. Uh, it'd be primarily an informal opportunity for council members to discuss their, uh, objectives and provide goals. For us, uh, for the staff of the succeeding year. But it will be official council meeting and there'll be an opportunity for public comment, uh, both before and after the workshop. Uh, the council has asked, uh, just a third item. Uh, the council has, uh, pursued a project to create districts, electoral districts within the community. And our consultant will present to you their proposed, uh, map. Uh, and perhaps maps as alternatives at the regular council meeting on February the fifteenth. Uh, so that'll be their opportunity to present to you what they're recommending. Uh, there may be subsequent opportunities, obviously, for community input on, once they've seen what the consultants are recommending. Which will be on the fifteenth. Uh, the council is engaged in an effort to try to recruit, to try to recruit for a city manager. Uh, and as a result, and as a part of that process, the council has asked our recruiting consultants. To conduct two community forums. Whose purpose is to get community input on what kinds of background experience and qualities should we be looking for in the next city manager? The first is an in-person forum on February the seventeenth at five thirty at the community center. The second is a virtual or over online opportunity to do the same. Uh, at five thirty on February the twenty second. Uh, and this is an opportunity for members of the community to provide input into what we should be looking for in the next city manager. That input is valuable to the council as you make your decision, as you evaluate candidates and make your ultimate decision. And then finally to remind you that, uh, the state of the city is scheduled for five thirty PM on February. The twenty first. So there's a lot going on in the month of February. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, um, thank you, Ed, for that report. Council, there any comments or questions? Um, thank you for that. Do we even take it out to the public? Not, no. Okay. Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Okay. So there's a lot going on on February and we really encourage our residents to participate, um, in all of these different events to be able to get information, give your input as well. Um, so thank you. So I will then, if there's no, um. Further comments or questions, uh, before we adjourn, then there was a discussion to put in reports. So if any of the council. Has reports that they'd like to do at this time, we can open it up for that.
The, the only item, just the January twenty-fifth met with, just for committee purposes, uh, met with Tamsi. Uh, they elected the new, uh, new chair, the new, uh, vice chair and the executive committee. Uh, in addition to that, uh, there was a report that there was, uh, some money that was awarded, uh, through the state for some, uh. Initial groundwork on the one-on-one safety improvements that will start. And so there was some money that was, uh, uh, given to, uh, Tamsi. It's gonna be coming down. So I'll report at the next meeting exactly how much that is and what those, uh, improvements will be.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, and mine. I just, you know, I'll, I'll do my report next time, but just a quick update because we did have a meeting with Supervisor Lopez and the South County Mayors. Um, today and, um. The county provided a presentation in terms of some of the, uh, damages that were caused through, to the county and to Ed. I think it was like seventy-five million in damages due to the storms and. They will be meeting with their, uh, different various legislators on Saturday to be able to have a tour of some of those damage areas, but. They did provide a really in-depth presentation. They're gonna provide it to all of the mayors and then I'll make sure I send it over to Ed so he can share it with the council. Um, council, uh, Supervisor Lopez also talked about, I know we've been working and many of you have. Had already requested, um, to be able to look at the river, our encampments there and what was the solution. So. They continue to work with our city staff to be able to find a solution with the county and working together with the county. I know, uh, Supervisor Lopez did mention that they, they've been trying to figure out the best approach for that. And so they will be. Uh, providing information to city staff in terms of, uh, you know, what is the best way to move forward with it, to be able to have. One is a cleanup, but also the long-term, um, solution to, uh, just, you know, some of the debris and that's in the river and also some of the. The resources for the encampment out there. So that's work coming in. Once we have that information, we'll provide it to the council. And that's, that's all I have. Um, so now the next item that we wanted to add is, uh, future agenda items.
I, I just have two items quickly and, um. On February eighth, I have a conflict and I'd be able to send, uh, my doodle, I put the, I could do the seventh and not the eighth. So unfortunately I will not be there for the homeless. And then also I believe the stated city address is, I'm gonna be with the grandkids in Disneyland. So. Unfortunately, that's already, it gets robot itself like that. I would have canceled on, but then, you know, they would have kind of complained. And then lastly, uh, we appointed our chairs, uh, and vice chairs for the Simmons Valley Waste Department. I'll be serving as the vice chair for this period. It's, uh, my South County's term, so on that basis. Which means more meetings.
I know, more meetings. Um, yeah, th- thank you for serving as vice chair and congratulations on that. Okay, council, then at this time, uh, future agenda items before we adjourn. Uh, so I'll start with Mayor Poten. If you have any future agenda items, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Correlo? Okay, Councilmember Chavez?
None.
Councilmember Coverd?
None.
Okay. So I just have one comment and then I do have two items really quick. So first I want to say congratulations or happy birthday to Jack Franchoni. Who turned a hundred years today, which is pretty amazing for our community to have someone. Turn a hundred, right? And then just all of the knowledge and everything that he's done instrumental for the city of Solidad. So. Um, I just want to say again publicly, happy birthday, Jack. Happy hundred birthday. We hope you have, you know, wishing you many, many more. Um, and then just, uh, some of the items that were brought forth to me is. Uh, the flares that Councilmember Chavez had talked about the last time, and I know that the chief had gone out there. He had looked at, you know, uh, just. Some of that activity. I continued to get comments on that and continue to get complaints about that. Um, I know part of that when we did the first time that I had received the comment, it wasn't coming from Sammy sent in. That's why it was coming. From Bryant Canyon. And so at that time, we were able to reach out to the Ed Commission. Because they have the permits and they're the ones that provide permits for the, um, uh, farms to be able to have these flares. So I, I know. It continues to happen. So I would like us to be able to look at meeting with the Ed Commissioner. And being able to figure out what is the solution because this has really been. It, it's ongoing. And so I have, I know that there was individuals that I had requested to send in the complaint to the city. So that we would be logged in and documented. Uh, but I think we have to find a resolution. Um, so. Obviously they have timeframes when they can do this and when they can't. So that continues to be a problem. So if we can really check into working with the Ed Commissioner and what we can do, what are the, what are the remedies that, um, we as a city can take. Um, so that was one of the items. The other one is MST. I know we had talked about the whole reorganization and, um, making sure that we had. As part of our operations, a better but not network, uh, that there was gonna be some modifications, um, based on some of the. Input from the businesses in regards to, um, the MST corridor and some of their changes. So. I know that there's still, there's still some updates, resolutions. I, I want to make sure we, we expedite or we. Find a resolution, Ed, because this has been.
Are you asking for a council agenda item? Uh, unless, we, we, we can give you an update. Is that what you're asking in turn back?
Well, I want to not get, let me get an update because I know that we've discussed it in the past. And so just an update where we're at with that and how we're gonna move forward. There's conversations already that happened. There was input from council. There was input from our businesses. So. I just want to see where we're at. Let's move it forward. It's been two years, at least for me on MST side, um, trying to deal with this. So. If we could do that, um. And then the other comment that I received, which is my final is, um, there's been a lot of internet outages in our community. And I know that everybody has different providers, um, but, but I've heard it a lot, especially that people are still working from home. Kids are still doing homework, but. We recently, and I don't know, I thought it was because of the winter storms, but it's been really actively just, you know. A lot of outages and stoppages of the, the wifi of our internet. So how can we address that? And so I'm just posing this question to see, is there a way that we can? You know, how can we deal with, with that? How can we find a resolution? Um, because I think it's important that. You know, we have reliable wifi. I know we're working on different ends to make sure that that happens, but, but it's still really spotty and it has been a lot lately.
Well, a couple of comments if I may. First, a small, we were weeks away from, uh, maybe even less, uh, of opening the homework center at the community center. Where there'll be wifi access and computers for people to do homework. For the people who may not have access at home, we can provide that, uh, at our community center. Uh, our ability as a city government to resolve internet, uh. Connection issues is constrained by the federal law. Uh, but we can. Give you a full report on those kinds of, what are, what are opportunities and challenges are.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, yes, I was also gonna just, um, say that I know there is, um, uh, a larger, uh, initiative right now when it comes to the, uh, internet and providing better infrastructure. Um, I did attend, one out of ten, I, um, kind of listened in on a meeting while I was in Sacramento for the, uh. From the state and it was for the California Middle Mile Broadband Initiative that they have. Um, and so we do have, I believe, one of our county supervisors who sits on that committee. So I think if we can have some representation. Maybe from staff to attend those meetings. They are public. They are presumed. Um, and so I did make a, submit a public comment because I couldn't attend asking, uh, if they could please prioritize Solidad in the first, uh, phase. I mean, I think it's worth an effort to, to do that and also to attend. I believe they only have one advisory meeting right now. And if we go on their website, which I don't have on hand, but, um, Google, we know that'll pop up. It'll tell you the next meetings that, uh, that they have. And there is an opportunity. It'll tell you the next meetings that uh that they have, and there is an opportunity to do public comments. So I think if we also let our community know and if they could, you know, help us out so we could get prioritized.
Thank you, Councilwoman Correlo, but we do, we are part of a JPA already. So the City of Solidad and I know Councilmember Chavez sits on the JPA with, I want to say, the Core South County Cities and Councilmember Supervisor Lopez. So we are already accessing um some of the infrastructure dollars as part of the JPA that the city entered into. I want to say a year and a half ago. Was it about a year and a half ago? So we have accessed some of that money and they're working with our, our C, no, with rural communities.
Counties.
Counties to be able to uh pair up that, the money that's available through the state, through the Middle Mile Project and also the other funding sources. We as a city, um just so the community knows, also invested twenty five thousand.
It was twenty five thousand. And plus, we've gotten two point five million for uh this county so far from where, and what we're talking about is really from Gonzalez, Chular and down south. We've got about two point five million dollars that have come in so far uh for that project. And so what it would do ultimately, if we're able to get all the funding that's necessary, and it sounds like we are at the top of the list right now for, I mean, honestly, for the state of California. Um i- in part, I think one of the things that it will do, if we are able to move forward this project where we do bring uh additional uh fiber, additional broadband, uh it would give the opportunity for other providers to possibly tap into that, that broadband. So it wouldn't be just right now what we have. Right now, the company in Solidad that has invested has been uh only one company that has invested in broadband and is the sole provider of fast internet here in Solidad. But it was done on their own dime. And so this would give the opportunity to bring a a connection that would come into our cities here and into our county that could give that opportunity for other smaller uh organizations or companies such as Redshift and others. I'm just throwing out Redshift because I know that's one from Monterey County that's small, that could give an opportunity for someone, someone like that to also offer um the opportunity to bring in broadband into our communities down here in South County. Because right now, the only company that did invest in this community was unfortunately just one company. And that is the sole provider, AT&T. Um another one of the large companies has not invested here in this area. And so they can't tap into that particular broadband right now. So that, that's the issue we have right now.
Yeah, and so that'll be that the whole concept of wanting to make sure that we have reliable internet and then also affordable internet. So as part of that process, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if um perhaps we should address this on on our social media or address them, address it somehow as a city because I feel that part of the frustration and I'm I'm, I'm sure we all hear it. Yeah, is that they don't know like what's, you know, what's being done right now. So I think just kind of, we hear you, we're working on it, um you know, just so that they know that we are aware.
So we can provide.
And to the mayor, I think through the mayor, one of the things I think maybe as through the city, maybe there'd be a possibility of Ed or um the mayor or folks here on the council to meet with our local uh liaison to um the organization that seems to keep going down uh so that they can maybe is one of the things that for us, for us is information. The people like information. People want information really fast. And Facebook and social media seems to be the tool that most people get really quickly. And so I would encourage that company to put out information out on their social media so that we can put it out on our social media as quickly as possible. Because that's part of the frustration, I think, that folks out there make up their own conclusions and come up with their own things that might be happening. Um.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll reach out to our governmental liaison to see what she can do and how we can make sure that they're putting up that information. We're tapping into those and then I'll make sure to, for the state of the city, that we really address. So people know this is what we're doing. We are, it's not, it's not gonna happen yet, but we are engaged. The city has invested. We are part of a JPA and we're working on those issues. So um well, I took note of that, so that can be added to that conversation as well. Um, okay, so council, then with that, I wanna adjourn this, I adjourn this memory. This, I adjourn this meeting and I want to adjourn in memory of our Sama Police Officer Gonzalo Carrasco Junior. Um our condolences to his family, to the police officers, officers and to the city of Sama. So with that, I adjourn this meeting at eight fifty one. Thank you.